We're here, he was DPW Director. So, yeah. I was having a moment. Since nineteen ninety-nine.
We looked it up this morning, you've been the Mayor Pro Tem since November of twenty fourteen.
I was on the council for a little bit before I was Mayor Pro Tem. And then, before that, it was school board. And then before that, it was library board, although library board and school board overlapped. And there was a PTO Board of Directors in there too. I was on Red Flannel one year. Yes, one year. That was like, three presidents ago. I was on there when Michelle took over from Cindy. Probably? That is probably. Hi Clint!
Usually it's twice a year.
If you get a nice GRCC Zoom background. It's fine. I had a, I had a, a different meeting the other day and I'm like, okay, so do I? I didn't care to your conferences on Zoom.
That's okay, I just wanted.
I promised me to shower.
It's the dance background, I haven't gotten that.
Yeah?
I thought, yeah, I know. That's amazing.
I have a very lovely storming of the Bastille. I, I go and like, pull him off the, especially because I taught on Zoom for a year. So whatever we were doing, right? So here we are storming the Bastille. Today, we're coming from the Hoover Dam.
I mean, at least.
Look, you're on top of the Hoover Dam.
It's a new program.
Do I have to dance with Sean Spicer? As long as I don't have to dance with Sean Spicer. My dance friends were all like, oh my god, what is that? But I wouldn't count on it to throw me in the air and catch me.
All right, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. We have the November eleventh City Council meeting. If everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, we have two council members that were elected last Tuesday. We have Lisa Ashinson with two hundred and twenty-six votes, and Ashley Hamel with two hundred and eighteen. So if you would both rise and raise your right hand, I'll issue your, raise your oaths at the same time.
I, Lisa Ashinson, and I, Ashley Hamel. Do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Council member to the best of my abilities. The signature there from both of you.
All right, well, they're working on that, just a couple reminders before I open the floor for nominations for the mayor. You do not need a second to nominate somebody, so you can just nominate someone. That person does need to accept that nomination. And if there are multiple people nominated, it's in the order that they were nominated in. With the way we call the vote.
I have a question. We do have discussion time?
If you, yeah, we could do a discussion. If we need it.
Excellent.
All right, I will open the floor for nominations for mayor.
I would nominate Pam Conley for mayor.
Pam, do you accept?
I absolutely accept.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Renee Race.
Um, Race, do you accept?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion. Any discussion?
Do you want to start with anybody specific?
We can go down the line.
Okay. I think that every person on this board right now is more than qualified to be mayor. And whatever happens, it's meant to happen for the best thing for our city. And that's how I feel about it, and that's how I'll vote.
Yeah, and I also feel the same way. I think some are more qualified than others. It's not a personality vote. It's not, it's not about who we like the most. It's not about, it's, it's about who we think is going to do the best job for the city. And, we, you know, we vote on it every, 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 um, year. So, if you don't, if you don't get it this year, there's next year. Just love all of you guys, and it's not based on anything but who. My vote will be who I think is best for the city right now.
I had a moment tonight, walking out the door. First time I haven't walked, had Jerry Hall pick me up in ten years for this meeting. And Jerry and I did this, and before this, we did school board. When I came here, he was the DPW Director, and I just, if, um, if I'm elected mayor, I'm gonna spend a lot of time thinking about, what would Jerry do? I just, um, that's kind of my, that's, that's where I'm at right now.
Uh, well, and as, as Lisa said, that I, I also think that some people are more qualified than others. I think that existing relationships with multiple community organizations are important, and those things can be grown over time. But we have a candidate who has those relationships pre-existing now in Ms. Conley. And I, I think that at this time, she is the right choice.
So I'm super new to this council, as of five minutes ago. So I do know Ms. Conley, uh, from watching the meetings, and she is extremely smart, and I have no doubt that she would do well. And I also know that Ms. Race, um, I, she's been more than valuable in, um, my own race for council, and so I think she is knowledgeable and would do awesome as well. Ms. Race?
Just excited for the opportunity to be able to help the city. As a newer person, I think that it can be a positive thing. But I definitely will be excited for whoever gets it.
Only comment is whomever is elected, I would like to see them keep us on task and topic. Okay, we have a tendency at times, and having been with the mayor all, often in other directions, other topics seem to be pulled in with it. I'd like to see us stay on task and topic.
Hey, any further discussion? Okay, I will call the roll call for Ms. Conley for mayor. One moment while I get my list here. Ms. Ashinson?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
No.
Ms. Hamel?
No.
Ms. Nix, uh, Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
No.
Ms. Conley, you do have four votes, but we'll go ahead and do the same for Ms. Race. So now we're voting for Ms. Race for mayor. Ms. Ashinson?
No.
Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
No.
Ms. Powell?
No.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Conley, congratulations, you are the newly elected mayor.
Thank you.
If you would please rise, I will issue your oath of office.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you. I, Pam Conley, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Signature right there. Thank you, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Right. Can you get out? All right. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the mayor. I am going to nominate Molly Nixon.
I will nominate Renee Race.
You guys have to accept it first, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I would, I would accept.
Any other nominations?
Renee Race.
Any other nominations? Any discussion?
I would like to say that I'm very proud of everybody who works for our city, and developed hard-worth work ethic and team effort. And we all have stuff to learn. We all make mistakes, but we all learn from them. And whatever happens, let's just carry on and do what's best for our city. And that's all I have to say.
Um, I think that Molly is, is very qualified for Mayor Pro Tem. And I also think that if the direction you want to, that Renee wants to go, if she wants to become mayor, that the learning curve, that's why I nominated you, is the learning curve would be met by serving as Pro Tem. That's why I nominated her.
Um, I nominated Molly, having been on this ride for a very long time. And I, having been Jerry Hall's Robin to his Batman, I would be very honored to have Ms. Nixon as my Robin to my Batman. But I am also equally open to other people. But my preference would be Ms. Nixon having worked together in a variety, including Red Flannel negotiations, and there were recalls, and there were meetings that I think went to letter N, P, in the agenda. So I, I know that you have the tenacity, and I know that you have the, um, the ladder to handle the really long meetings. And not that I want us to be in that place, but I know what you are capable of. And I have quite a few things in my vision for where I would like to move with the city. And I know that we share some of those things. So that would be why I nominated her.
Uh, well, I, I, I would like a cape.
I can, I can make that happen. I can absolutely make that happen.
It is the will of the council. I, I will, I will serve if that's, if that's the will of the council. If it is Renee, I know that she is smart and capable. And then we will go forward regardless.
Um, yeah, I just agree with Ms. Ashinson about, uh, that's a good learning opportunity for whoever does it.
Ms. Race?
I think it would be a great step into the move to mayor. But I believe that the City Council, as a group, I believe that they're focused on what was, and not what will be the differences. I think that that would be a benefit. I know that I don't, I haven't been here for years, like a lot of you have, but I know I do a good job. What I do now, what I do in my life, I feel like I would be a solid Pro Tem.
I obviously thought that she could do it. That's why I nominated her. Uh, I wouldn't have no problem with her being Mayor Pro Tem also. I think she is capable, and it's possible for her to do it. I also believe that Molly would be a good candid, candidate. In all honesty, I had addressed that, a position with her prior to this, as far as running. And she respectfully declined, and I can, and I can agree with her to that. And I would never hold that against her, because I appreciate everything she has done, everything she does do, and everything I am anticipating she will do in the future.
At this time, I will, if there's any other comment, at this time, then I will take a roll call vote. So this is for Molly Nixon, as she was the first person nominated, Ms. Ashinson.
Yes.
Ms. Conley is a yes. Mr. Gross?
No. You did say Molly, right?
Correct.
No.
We do it in the order that they're nominated.
And that's mine.
Uh, Ms. Hamel? No. Molly Nixon?
Yes.
Rose Powell?
Yes.
Renee Race?
No.
So, that is four yeses, two, three noes, and that means we have a new Mayor Pro Tem. Would you like me to hold the vote for the second?
I don't think it's necessary, but if you'd like to, that's fine too.
I, I feel like.
If you have an open nomination on the floor.
Um, I can hold the vote. So for Lisa, for Renee Race, Lisa Ashinson?
Yes. No, I can't. I didn't want to hold the vote, I was confused. I would like to say yes, but I can't.
In all the years we've done it, we haven't done that.
I really want to say yes, but no.
I understand. So you threw me a little bit too. Pam Conley is a no. Jerry Gross?
No.
Okay, okay. Uh, Ms. Hamel? Yes. Ms. Nixon?
No.
Ms. Powell?
No.
Ms. Race?
We're voting for?
You.
Oh, yes.
I thought we were voting for Molly.
No, we, we voted for Molly.
Okay.
We, that was four to three. And we're now voting for Renee, because otherwise, we have an open motion on the floor. So I'm told by the clerk. But I have to say, in the times that I've done this.
I understand that Mr. Gross would like to change his vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're now at four noes, and.
But, no, Mr. Gross would like to.
Change his vote?
Yes.
Okay, so are you changing your vote to a yes for Ms. Nixon?
Or no, for, for Ms. Race?
That's exactly what I voted on. Based on you said it was for Ms. Nixon, and I said no.
I think there was, there was some confusion, because I, as Ms. Conley said, we have never voted for multiple people before. But I understand you to say yes to Mrs. Ritz.
I would have said yes to Mrs. Ritz.
Okay, I was, I was under the impression you were voting no on both.
I was confused, you guys, it's.
Yeah.
Preference, you can or you cannot, so, okay.
Okay.
If you guys prefer or not, if first candidate gets.
You're the clerk, you tell us how it's supposed to work.
We're done either way.
Okay. So, we have a Mayor Pro Tem. Congratulations, Molly Nixon. I will get a cape. Do you have a color? Red? Do we need a red flannel cape?
I'm Molly Nixon, do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the City of Michigan, the City Charter and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor Pro Tem to the best of my abilities.
They will.
All right, moving on then. The council welcomes, and this is public comment, unless, would you like me to wait a moment, Madam Clerk? Since you're trying to do, um, minutes?
Go ahead.
Okay. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you would like to be further contacted, please state your name and address for the record. But it's not required. We do not expect anyone to have to put their address on YouTube. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak? Anyone online wishing to speak? All right, then we will move on to, we don't have any public hearings, so the adoption of the agenda.
Adam Mayor, I'd like to offer two items to be added to the agenda. Uh, so we were recently sent something called the Release of Drain Easement and Damages. I was going to offer it for the communications, but, um, Ms. Powell suggested maybe we add it to discussion.
Oh.
Yeah, which one? I'm sorry.
This would be the Release of Drain Easement and Damages from the Kent County. I, I could offer just an explanation right now of what it is, if that would help.
It would help, but why don't we just do it on the agenda?
Oh, I guess we'll throw it into the agenda under discussion.
Under discussion items, so, we're gonna call that.
Excuse me, Rebecca, can you get something back on my computer for me? I'm sorry.
Seems to be frozen.
Yeah. I need, um, all I have on this agenda, and I don't see the rest of it up there. See why I'm not mayor?
Did you lose your?
Yeah. I did.
Madam Mayor, I have a second to add, if I could.
Sure, that would be wonderful.
Likewise, I would offer it under communications, but we could put it under discussion if you wanted to. It's the five-year draft recreation plan.
Okay. Did someone think that that would be, I, that's probably a good idea to have a discussion about? We'll make that C. I started to read through it, and it was quite like, you handed it in your email, what, yesterday? And it's quite lengthy, so I didn't fully get to it, so it would be nice to, I just skimmed it. It'd probably be good to have a, um, and I, where I know, are you good? As a piece moving forward on the consent agenda, there's a piece I want to move off of that, if we're, whenever we're done with the adoption of the agenda. Are we good with adoption of the agenda?
So what are we doing with the, uh, recreation plan?
They've both been added to discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So that's gonna be C?
Okay.
D is gonna be the drain relates, under discussion items. C is going to be the five-year recreation plan. It's gonna be part of the, um, grant money that we're looking at for either park equipment and/or a splash pad.
Yeah. I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended with the addition of eight B and eight C.
Or, hey, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. I would like to take, I would like to move, um, item, let me find it. When I printed this, it shifted. Item D to discussion item, no, not item D. The one on the overlay. Item C, item C to discussion item. And just because I would like to have a conversation so that people see that we're doing this, because I actually think it's kind of exciting. Um, I was discussing this with my favorite planning commissioner, and I said, I feel like this is really exciting, and we need to talk about it. Although I understand that zoning overlays might not be super exciting to everyone, so.
And Mayor, would that be item eight D as in dog?
That would be yes.
In discussion.
In discussion. So that'll become D, yeah. Is the white pine overlay.
Counselor Powell, you and I discussed a couple of other consent items, are you satisfied with my explanation?
Uh, I think, based on the Policy Twelve, Ronnie Murchison Policy, that, um, item C, which we've already moved, but item E, which is at the first, uh, second reading, deserves some, a little more discussion. Home occupations, that, that's what that one is. And, um, item D, I'm kinda on the edge with, I know we've discussed it five times, but.
It would be actually helpful to move them together.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So D and E.
So we're gonna call those. We're gonna, you want them all as item E under discussion?
They're ready for action.
Okay.
Yes.
You want them under action item? And actually, the white pine overlay should be under action item too, right? Because I'm not actually wanting to change anything, I just feel like we should talk about it.
Yes.
That is no longer eight D.
So that would be.
It is now seven D.
Seven D. Is the white pine overlay. And then it would be, would you like that separate, Madam Clerk, for the D and E under the consent agenda? Would you like them as one? Or do you want them as two? Are they two separate ordinances? So we need to vote. So we should make them two separate ones. So they will be E and F, under action items?
Very good.
Excellent.
Yes, does that work for you, Ms. Powell?
That's exactly what I wanted to, I wanted to go with that.
Glad we could make that happen. So with that, um, do I have a motion to support the consent agenda?
As it's been.
As, as it's been modified.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to, uh, accept the consent agenda as it's been modified.
There a second?
Second.
Adam Mayor, um, I think the motion should be to approve the consent.
Approve, sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the new changes.
And I will second that. Any discussion? Yes. Yes. Any discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call on this, because it involves some money. Ms. Ashinson?
Yes.
Ms. Conley votes yes. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel? Yes. Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And I gotta move myself to the end, because the mayor should vote last. All right, then, moving on to the action items. Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-one recommendation of the Cedar Springs Local Officers Compensation Committee. I have a question, I saw that Mr. Laws is on that committee, is, is he back? Or was he absent for that?
He was not here for that meeting. Ms. Rodwell and I were discussing that the other day, about where he might be located, but we haven't seen.
He's in Detroit.
He bounces back and forth between a few locations.
Do we have to do something? Do we put him on that committee, is that a?
Yeah, I mean, Madam Clerk, is it December when we reappoint?
Correct. I'm not certain when his term expires, but any of them that are expiring, an email from me of those that are expiring.
Okay.
Your position.
Right, right, I just saw, I saw in the email the names, and I, I know that he's moved out of town, and so I was surprised to see his name.
We, we could also take him off the board. I think you might have to hold a hearing on that.
I just was, I was just wondering.
But he doesn't meet for another two years.
Yeah, so, I was just curious if he came back. All right, so I have a motion in a second, no discussion?
Was there a motion?
I thought there was, okay. Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-one recommendation of the Cedar Springs Local Officers Compensation Committee. What is the will of the council?
I'll second that.
Well, there's.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Motion.
Any discussion?
My discussion is this, and I've heard this discussion several times about raising the month, the pay rate for us counselors. At this time, I'm satisfied with what we get. My concern is, you know, paper and high-speed internet, and that's covered. I really consider this as a voluntary position, elected position, so that's mine.
Um, the only thing I have to say is, um, it's not a big bump. I just don't want to be behind in the future if people don't want to run, because we're way behind. But I mean, it's not like it's a big bump, so.
I'm, whatever. Not a big deal.
Ms. Nixon?
Um, you know, it's, it's been since two thousand and five, and we, we do have to start thinking about eventually, some of us may not be here, and other people may want to run, and costs of doing this, so do continue to rise, so I would be in favor of accepting their recommendation.
Ms. Hamel?
Um, I would agree with everything that the previous council.
Ms. Race?
I'm in the grants as well.
Mr. Gross?
Fine.
Okay. Then I will do a roll call because this involves money. So, Ms. Atchison?
We are.
We're voting.
On a raise right now.
We are voting on a raise.
I would say yes.
We're voting to accept the recommendation.
Yep, yes.
Okay, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
No.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes, and the motion passes. Moving on to action item B, motion to approve Chamber of Commerce Community Events Application for the Carriage Rides and Mingle with Kris Kringle. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce Community Event Application for Carriage Rides and Mingle with Kris Kringle.
I would second.
Any discussion?
We had a discussion about porta potties today. Have we talked to anybody from chamber about that? They're gonna have a hundred and fifty.
About me.
Hundred and fifty, two hundred people down there.
I don't know how many people you're talking about porta potties with, so.
Well, that's what it.
Well, you never know.
On their app, it says a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so, i- i- as Ms. Powell and I were discussing this, unfortunately, the chamber has kind of gotten back into its old ways of dropping something on my desk and expecting it to get approved at one meeting from the city council. And I'm a little disappointed that they didn't have anybody here to discuss these issues. So I, I do have some comments about these events. So on the carriage ride, the chamber asked that the whole staging area be closed, there's a lot of parking spaces in the staging area, and frankly, I don't think it's necessary. What I propose is that we close off the trailer parking area, which is on the east side of that property, that would allow the train that they want to use to load and unload at that location. But we would keep the ten or fifteen parking spaces open and available. Similarly, at that event, they want to have fire pits, whi- which I understand it's gonna be December, potentially cold here in Michigan. But I would ask that any fire pits or warming devices of any kind be approved of by the Cedar Springs Fire Department. I would continue my objection from years past of the carriage rides going up and down Main Street. I understand that it's a roadworthy vehicle theoretically, but I just don't think it's safe, so I would make that objection, but council has overruled me in the past. Or the mingle with Kris Kringle event, there's nothing in there about police or fire leading the parade. Now, the parade is only scheduled to go down, I don't even know if this road has a name, the dirt road that leads south from staging area, back over to Second Street, so they're fairly slow and, and safe roads. But I always do like having, you know, some kind of vehicle there to help protect, make them visible. So I guess I would ask that the chamber discuss that with the fire department or the police department, assuming an escort. And of course, I, I've made my thoughts known regarding the religious use of the city's property. No other way you can slice it, a Christmas tree in the nativity scene in the city park could open us up to other religious groups wanting to use our park, in which case we'd be obligated to do so. And the last.
This tree isn't the same as a creche, am I correct?
A Christmas tree?
Well, a lit tree, call it what you like.
It's more than nativity scene.
Yeah.
I, I think you could make an argument for a secular Christmas tree, especially the way ours is lit up with underwear.
I feel like the.
What?
Court has made that argument.
Underwear?
Yes, there is underwear on our Christmas tree.
Okay, you mean red flannels?
Red underwear.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just, want everybody to be aware that is a possibility. And the last thing is the bathrooms, the city has to close its outdoor bathrooms in the winter, because if our pipes freeze and they're unheated.
Right.
We'll have a disaster, so the chamber probably should make contact with either the library or the fire department to see if they would have their bathrooms open for their events. So those are my thoughts and recommendations.
Is this something, Mr. Manager, that you feel like you can manage with the chamber? Is this something that you, would you like the city to approve it with these caveats?
I mean, that's probably the easiest way to do it, but I have found the chamber to be a little bit difficult to work with, just because they're hard to get a hold of.
So do you feel like we would be putting you in a difficult position if we approve it with that caveat?
No. No, I, I deal with the chamber on a regular basis.
I know you do, but at the same time.
You're supposed to get a hold of sometime.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
If we don't have the carriage rides on Main Street, where would we have carriage rides?
I don't know.
That would be like you would say to them. Yeah.
I, I'm not anticipating telling them that they can't.
Right.
My anticipation is that council, you know, says, do what we want, and that's what, what I'm gonna do. I just don't think it's safe.
I just didn't know if you had another area you thought would be better.
And the idea, of course, is the city has the trees lit up in December, a lot of the businesses are going to light up their storefronts, it's pretty. Yeah.
Don't we have an on-duty sheriff at all times?
Do, but they're generally supposed to be taking care of criminal activity and, and not leading a parade. That, that's half of a joke, part of the other issue is that my sergeant deputy has been out sick for the last two weeks. So I haven't been able to discuss it with him because I received this after he was out sick. So I'm sure I can come up with something. But the city is not gonna pay two hundred dollars to have a police escort.
Right, but we have somebody on duty who could
potentially.
Do something. I, I also would suggest that, because you are, you do say that they got it in late, they're kind of just not willy-nillying it right now, thinking that whatever they do is fine. That we strongly put in with our communication with them, that they need to step it up and follow the guidelines, because otherwise, we're not going to. It's gonna take more than one time in front of us to get it okayed. You know, if they're not gonna start, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing, we're not gonna just okay it just because it's them.
Ms. Nixon?
I have a concern. In the past, we have not loved the idea of fire pits, because inevitably, it will burn a hole in the grass. Um, and I would love to have discussed this last month, so that we could have said that and had them bring it back to us. But as there is no time to discuss the possibilities of that, I would want to strike fire pits from their ability.
Well, for what it's worth, there's a very large man sitting next to me who I'm sure would say, we're not allowing fire.
I was gonna ask.
It's a very strong sense. But propane heaters, the umbrella type, there might be something that the fire department would be okay with, which is why I think in my notes I put a warming.
I would, a, a warming device would be acceptable to me, but we haven't had adequate time to problem-solve with the chamber to assist them with this fire problem. So I think that warming device is fine, but I'm, I'm absolutely against fire pits.
Ms. Hamel?
I guess my only comment would be on the police side, is just responding to Ms. Powell. I imagine they would only be available for this event if nothing else was happening at the same time.
Right.
So, I mean, we do have officers on the street, but they wouldn't be responding to this if there's anything else. And then I agree with the fire pits, so that doesn't really sound like a very good idea.
Ms. Race?
I am fine the way it is.
Mr. Gross?
I also disagree with the idea that it wasn't in here on time force to have a chance to discuss and cover some of these issues in the past. It's not like this is the first time they've had this event. It may be a change in people and personnel, I understand that that happens. But there should be some means and manner somewhere where it's recorded what we require. I find it difficult for us to have to be saying right now to the city manager, we will approve this, but you gotta take care of everything that we find wrong.
Yeah.
Unless he's going to accept that. If that's the if that is going to be the case, then I feel that it should come right off the agenda and something to replace it instead. Just giving the capability of the city manager to approve the event, if and when they satisfy him to, they've covered all of the issues that we have presented.
Would someone like to amend the emotion to include that language, the person who made the motion?
Oh, I did, didn't I? I'm like. Um, let's see. I would like to make the motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce Community Event Applications for Carriage Rides and Mingle with Kris Kringle with the modifications of no fire pits, warming stations might be a possibility, but that's gonna be to do with the city manager.
It might just be easier to say with the items we discussed today.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm glad I don't have to list them all. Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce Community Event Application for Carriage Rides and Mingle with Kris Kringle with the items that we discussed and with the city manager's approval.
Would the person who made the second support that? Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
Um, I was at the chamber meeting when they discussed that, and they do have a new president and a new kind of a organization, and Mr. Perry was in there trying to guide them through this, through his experience. And so, they're gonna have to find out that this is, this is no joke, we do this for the safety of the public, so. Um, I'm sure they will cooperate every way they can.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. Moving on to action item C, an ordinance to modify chapter five, article three, entitled recreational adult use of marijuana establishments for the code of ordinances for the city of Cedar Springs, second reading. What is the will of the council? Do I have a motion?
I know where we are.
C, under seven.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve, or excuse me, yes, to approve the modification of chapter five, article two, entitled recreational slash adult use marijuana establishments for the code of ordinance for the city of Cedar Springs.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
This is the ordinance where we name the numbers of businesses, and I'm totally satisfied with what that ordinance says.
Any other discussion?
I should point out, there is a second aspect of this, it's not just the limitation on the licenses. And that is, we're also changing the renewal period. The original draft indicated that the renewal had to occur a minimum of thirty days ahead of time, uh, which wasn't that big of a problem, but it didn't give any specific language about what occurred at that point, um, that if they were not able to satisfy that thirty-day requirement, so. We've made it a little bit easier in that way, but we also have made it a little bit harder in a different way, so it addresses the renewal period as well.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Ms. Atchison? Yes. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. Moving on to item D that we had moved off of the consent agenda on the White Pine Trail. And this is a motion to approve the overlay for the White Pine Trail, and there's, the specific language is a motion to approve the ordinance, and we don't, I don't know if we have the ordinance number, to amend chapter forty, article three, division twelve, to add section forty dash three ninety, entitled White Pine Trail Overlay Zone to the White Pine Trail Overlay Zone, and to modify the map entitled the zoning map of Cedar Springs as a second reading. Proposed parcels for overlay zone, proposed modified zoning map, city planner memo regarding overlay zone, I am the one that asked to have this pulled off, um, so I am not gonna make the motion because I'm the chair, but I wanted to bring it to the attention of our community, because I think it's a really fabulous thing, and it's something that the planning commission recommended without us requesting that they do it. They, they decided that it was the thing that needed to happen for our community, and I think it's really wonderful, and I just wanted to be able to talk about it in that capacity.
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion.
I would make a motion to amend chapter forty, article three, division twelve, to add section forty dash three nine zero, entitled White Pine Trail Overlay Zone.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Can we have, like, since we're kind of doing this for the public, can he explain?
Sure.
What it is for us?
So first of all, for what it's worth, I'm not sure you have to read the whole thing, you might be enjoying it, and that's fine. But you could, the ordinance said item seventy or something.
Sure, sure.
If you want.
I didn't know, I didn't know in specifically in ordinances, how much of that, when we're, when we're actually adding or amending or retracting an ordinance, how specific it should be in the motion.
Well, so I'm not aware of any legal requirements, obviously, we all have to know what we're talking about, so.
As written?
Yeah, so the standard, I think, should be specific enough so that everybody knows what we're talking about. Yes, so the White Pine Trail Overlay Zone. Uh, so an overlay zone is essentially adding a second set of zoning characteristics to a number of properties. So I didn't get a chance to bring up the map, here it is, so the map would be at twenty-five of your packets, and a second map would be at page twenty-six of your packet. You see that these are properties that primarily abut the White Pine Trail in the downtown district. So the planning commission and, of course, the city council, I think, a year and a half ago, two years ago, redid the zoning map at that time to, how you say, make the map reflect reality versus what this planner had done. Um, and so we took properties that were industrial and called them industrial. However, you know, under the law, there's no requirement that says you gotta be industrial forever. So what the overlay zone essentially does is it says, okay, great, you've got an industrial property now, but, you know, in the interest of adding things for the trail, you, you could be a, a, a commercial use of that property instead of an industrial use. So I don't have the whole list in front of me, but my recollection is that we essentially took the uses that were permitted in the B two or B three commercial districts, and essentially said, well, here is what is now permitted on these properties in the overlay zone. So if you are the owner of a property in the overlay zone, you could either convert your entire industrial property to these new commercial uses, or, as the ordinance is written, you could even subdivide your property now to keep industrial in part of your building and add commercial in a separate part of your building. That is something that was specifically promoted in the ordinance.
And what this would allow would be, for example, say, a hot dog stand, or a sandwich shop, or an ice cream store, or.
A hot dog stand, but.
Okay.
Because that would be exterior to a building.
Okay.
That would be under the mobile vending ordinance.
A place that sells hot dogs. Inside a building. Along the trail could now exist. And so if you bike from, you know, Rockford, or even further into Garnet Pids, or you're coming from the other way, and you want to be able to bike and get an ice cream, a place could be right along the trail that does that. And I think that's just a really fabulous idea.
And that, that would make a building could have two uses.
Correct. And as a matter of fact, normally, when we do these things, there's only one person in the audience, you don't own any industrial buildings over there, do you?
No.
And so, unfortunately, I think sometimes the public and business owners don't pay attention to what we do here. So one of the things I was thinking about is actually putting together a letter and sending it to these businesses and saying, hey, here's what we did, if you're interested in taking advantage of us.
Yeah.
This is why I wanted to talk about it tonight. I think the letters is. This is why I wanted to talk about it tonight. I think the letters is swimming idea. But I thought at least pulling it off the consent agenda and having a conversation would make it possibly more public.
Yes.
So that was, that was my, my feeling on it. So any other discussion?
As I remember, we discussed there would be no marijuana stores in that area. And I think it's excellent too. These guys are sitting on huge properties. And if there can get somebody in there making some money and bringing some people to town, then that's what we wanna do.
Any other discussion?
Just one question.
Sure.
Was the chamber involved with this at all? Seems it might move some business from downtown to. That area?
The polite answer is no.
Okay, just. Just wondering.
Any other discussion? Then I will take a roll call vote on this. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. Moving on to item. E. Do you, would you like E and F put together, Madam Clerk, Mr. Manager?
No, because they are ordinances.
Okay.
Choose to pass them, you would go on and pass them and discuss them at the same time.
Okay, so this is Ian F that we moved from the consent agenda. Regarding the motion to approve ordinance to amend the city code by adding a new article. Which shall be designed to be Chapter Five, Article Three of said code and entire medical marijuana caregiver operations. And this is the fifth reading. So do I have a motion on?
I would make a motion to approve that ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'd second it.
Any discussion?
I was talking to Mike today about the registration. And that if you wanna have a, be a home care marijuana home care place, that you have to register. You can't just start growing. Pot and sell it as a caregiver. And I was wondering if there was any other. Biz homes in Cedar Springs right now who are acting as caregivers who aren't registered. And how we would say, you know, come on in and sign up and they have to renew that registration every year, right? So I think it'd be a good way for us to keep an eye on that situation. That somebody doesn't just buy a house, kinda live there and put seventy-two plants in. It could happen.
Are you looking for response?
Sure.
So this is actually a lot more complicated than meets the eye. So keep in mind, this is, both of these ordinances are addressing the two thousand eight Michigan law, state of Michigan law. That law got caught up in the court system until twenty twenty, December of twenty twenty. And the essential problem was whether somebody could rent space in a commercial district and grow these seventy-two plants. And the answer from the court was, well, yes, but courts can limit where you can grow this marijuana. But one of the things I think they also said in that ruling was you can't really limit somebody's ability to grow it in their own homes. Now, as fans of marijuana that you all are, or at least the marijuana laws we've been discussing for the last twenty-four months. The twenty eighteen law also allows you to grow up to twelve marijuana plants in your home for recreational purposes. The city has no ability to currently legislate anything to deal with that or affect that. The reason that this ordinance is coming to you now, besides the fact that the Michigan Supreme Court ruled on it in December twenty twenty. Is because the city did identify one caregiver grow operation. And it is located in an industrially zoned building. So if the Supreme Court says we have to allow it in single families, and this board, which has been pro-business. Thinks that industrial buildings could maybe make a little extra scratch by allowing this type of row and unused space, fine. The reason that we think it's important, city, is because it now gives us the authority to require some kind of odor control. That's the main objective.
Right.
The registration and the fee, okay, yes, it will take some of my time. It'll probably take some of the clerk's time. And that will cost some money and we should charge them for that. And of course, you know. We, we can tell people to register, but you know darn well that there are gonna be people out there who, if they're doing this, they're not going to register. So now it becomes a problem similar to what the policy, my policy, is along with fences and sheds and everything else. If we catch you doing it, we ask you to register. And we generally don't ticket for that, even though we have the authority to do so. So we could do this differently if we wanna maybe strongarm people into registering. But we haven't, I haven't decided a policy on that yet. But as far as the ordinances are concerned, similar to again, the twenty eighteen law that we adopted here in the community. You've got the regulatory ordinance, which is you have to register and license. And you have the zoning ordinance, which is saying this can only go in a single family residence inside the primary building. And it can only go inside an industrial zone building inside the primary building. So that's why there's two separate ordinances.
Any other discussion? Any questions for the city manager? Did you, did you get your answer? Did you get your question answered, Ms. Powell?
Yes, I did.
Ms. Atchison, anything?
Nope, I'm good. Oh, I am so talked out.
Right, right? Ms. Hamel, you're new. Do you have any, although I know you came from the planning commission, you took this to us.
Yeah, my preference is always that if we have ordinances on the book that they're enforced, otherwise we shouldn't have them. So my personal preference would be. To ticket them if they're not going by the ordinance, because we're already letting them do it. But that's your policy, so.
Well, the council sets the policy, but in the absence of policy, I will develop.
I think this is a little bit different to me than offense or other ordinances like that. Cause we do wanna keep an eye on this and we are being very flexible in Cedar Springs in terms of letting all of these types of things in. So my preference would be that there's some type of fine that. I mean, the punishment should be there so that it's an incentive to actually follow the law. So that's my preference.
Okay, Ms. Race?
They'll come out. Just one last question. If you are a caregiver, are you registered with the state then also?
Theoretically, however, I contacted the state to find out how I could verify if somebody was a caretaker. Cause if we stumble upon somebody and they say, well, I'm a caretaker. The state told me to take the long walk off a short pier. So there doesn't appear to be any way that I know of to verify whether somebody's a caretaker. But yes, theoretically, they should be registered with the state.
So anybody can walk into this place and the owner says, well, I'm a caregiver and they're selling weed out the back door. And we have, we don't have a leg to stand on.
Well, the police might have some alternative methods of dealing with it. As far as my contact with the MRA in the state of Michigan, no. But Ms. Hamel, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the police can check.
The state does regulate them. It's just we can't call and ask. Well, it isn't. Most of them have a card. That says they're a registered caregiver.
Okay.
That they could present. But like city manager says, it's sometimes very difficult to enforce. Like frequently.
Any other, do you have anything else, Mr. Gross?
I guess I should clarify that the police won't tell, like.
Right.
You.
Right.
So if they get stopped by the police, then I guess they can put in a tip and then they can check it. They probably won't.
So there's a motion. There's the second. Any other discussion? So I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Ms. Conley votes yes. Glad we had that discussion. Item F that we had moved from the consent agenda to the, it's the second piece of that. Ordinance, motion to approve ordinance to amend Chapter Forty, Article One, Section Forty-five E entitled. Definitions K through M. It's the. The piece on.
Permitted use.
Yeah, permitted uses. I, I mean, I can read the whole thing, but, and we're moving it. It's the piece that was item E under consent agenda. That is now F under action item. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I would second.
Any discussion? Mr. Manager, do you have anything to speak to, to add on this?
I tried to put the whole discussion in one.
No other discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Do, do you feel, Mrs. Powell, you're the one who had initially wanted this move? Did you get your questions answered?
Yes.
All right, then I will take a roll call vote. And Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. Moving on to item.
That is it, I believe, for.
It is for action item. Moving on to. Discussion items. An ordinance, A, item A, an ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for the city of Cedar Springs of Michigan. Providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof. Providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when such code in this ordinance shall become effective, a first reading. Or a frist reading even. I like frist. That sounds sort of festive. Do I have a motion? Or this is not a motion?
No, we're just.
So we have a discussion. Do I have anyone who would like to open the discussion on this?
If I could, please.
Certainly.
Have these been discussed with the planning commission? A lot of times, planning commissioners are very key in creating the ordinances.
Yeah, so this is not really zoning.
This is regulatory and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really what's going on is we paid a couple of attorneys lots of money to look at our ordinances and tell us. You know, what changes have been made of state law that affect our, our local law. And also to incorporate the ordinances that we passed since the last recertification effort, which was. Two thousand nine. So I don't know what was, you know, happened here between two thousand nine and twenty fifteen. But I see in my time here, we started at ordinance one ninety-four. And the most recent one that's up is two thirty-one. So that's thirty-seven ordinances that we've passed in my time here, not including the ones that we're working on tonight. So. Basically, they're taking all the ordinances we've passed since two thousand nine, slotting them in, making sure that there's nothing that's violative of the constitution. And it's a thousand and eleven pages or so. So if you guys want some reading, if you're having a hard time falling asleep.
I read it the first time.
Right, right?
So we did not add it to your packet, cause I, we felt that you wouldn't be able to find anything if we did that.
Right.
So we did email to you. It's also posted onto the city's webpage.
Yeah.
If you guys are interested in finding it there. In fact, I'm not sure I'll have the time to read it all, so. Have it if you would like. Other than that, it's gonna come back to you two more times. And we can pass it, I believe, in January.
Any other discussion? Ms. Powell?
Not at the moment.
Ms. Race? Mr. Gross? Okay, then moving on to item B, the drain release as a discussion item.
That was the most boring discussion we've ever had on anything. Okay, the drain release. So this was sent to us by Mr. Yonker, the Kent County Drain Commissioner. As you guys are all aware, while we were building the new fire station building, we concurrently installed a new storm drain. New storm drain is huge, big pipes underground. What this is, is it's a small little pipe that existed as part of the previous storm drain. And it drains the parking lot area back behind the Jose's Restaurant. There was. Discussion of basically flowable filling it with concrete so that it was blocked up.
Right.
And the city made the determination that if we did that, that the parking lot area back on those buildings would likely. Become permanently wet. So essentially what's happening here is the Kent County is saying, not our drain anymore. If the city wants to handle it, the city can handle it. So they're offering to sign it over to us. And we can do with it what we will at that point.
Any discussion?
Based on what Mr. Yonkers told us in the past is, you know, we only have to worry about it getting gas and blowing up. Are we safe in that respect?
I mean, it, it's a very short pipe. It does go kinda close to the southern edge of the. The apparatus bay in the new fire station. I don't think it's that dangerous. We could hire the engineers to come in and give us a greater detail if we wanted to. But essentially, we're just saying we're maintaining the drainage that existed previously. In that parking lot area.
And it's not underneath a building.
It's the southern edge of the apparatus bay. It, it's close. I'm not sure it actually goes under the building. Really, really what we're talking about is there's a thirty-foot easement on top of the drain. That's what's being released to us. And just happens to have a, you know, drain tile underneath it in the ground.
Okay.
Ms. Hamel?
If there is something wrong with it that we found, would we be able to have them fix it? Or are they literally just saying like, it's not ours anymore?
I love the Kent County Drink Commissioner, but they don't come up here to fix anything.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're, we're on our own on that anyway. And it, remember the, the very lovely presentation at the, at, at the school on the giant screen. And it was, it was quite the adventure. No, we are gonna be on our own on that one.
So theoretically speaking, the Kent County Drink Commissioner does have the authority and ability to especially assess the local district to fix things. Because the drain, the Kent County Drink Commissioner doesn't have their own budget. Their budget is especially assessing the local district. So in times past where we had minor issues with the storm drain, the DPW fixes it. And pays for it out of city funding.
Cause the alternative is, we call them in. They.
Tax us.
And they look at it and then they have a meeting about it and then they tax us on a drain field.
Million dollars.
And we are not really, I mean, for a big thing, for a big thing, but not for a minor thing.
So we, the city, would also have the ability to flowable fill it if we wanted to. But we wouldn't do that unless it failed in some way. And then we would just have to come up with some alternative drainage for that area.
It was the sewer gas that was really problematic with the buildings on top of it previously.
Well, yeah.
I mean, that was the, the concern on the explosion part, if I remember correctly, from the. Very detailed lengthy presentation from the Drain Commissioner.
It wasn't even so much the sewer gas, because what we're talking about is a storm drain, right?
Right.
It was the, the lines that were tied into the storm drain.
Right, that were coming from buildings that were put on top of it.
Yeah.
That weren't supposed to be there.
Necessarily clean water.
Right.
So we're not talking about the same issues as.
Not really.
Okay, any other discussion on that? We feel like we, we got that answered. Then moving on to see the five-year. Five-year plan on the recreation that we all had landed in our emails, I think, yesterday.
Rose might have four or five copies. Rose, by the way, is on the planning commission blast list, so everything I send to the planning commission, she gets a copy of, even though she's not on that board. And on the DDA.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so again, this just came to me at the last second. I did go through the first draft. This draft incorporates all of the changes I proposed. Unfortunately, just in a brief overview, I saw a number of changes I'd like to make to this draft too.
Right.
But we've gotten to that point where I want to expand the circle of people who are getting, looking at it. If you have thoughts, questions, concerns, comments, things that you'd like to see changed, please send me an email with, on page such and such. Here's what I'd like to see changed. Those would all be forwarded then on to the engineer that we paid to do this for us. And hopefully we'll come up with a good final draft prior to your January meeting. There is a thirty-day period that has to run that will start next Thursday. They'll take us to mid to late December and your next meeting. They'll take us to mid to late December, and your next meeting after that is January.
So just to clarify, this is, we voted to spend money on the engineering piece so that we could get this, so that we could apply for a grant. So this is that clock that's ticking that we had to, had to have this discussion to get this moving, to be able to get it in that timeframe.
It's a little bit more complicated than that, yeah.
But in a nutshell.
So this needs to be approved of at the latest, I think, February first. So we'll have about two weeks after your meeting, just in case. But concurrently, at the same time, the engineers are also working on the grant piece that you're talking about, which is a separate thing, but being done at the same time. That, I think, will generate more discussion than this will. This is more of a generalized, you know, here's kind of what parks and wrecking the areas like.
Right, but we needed this to be able to get to the grant.
So the grant will be, we want a splash pad here, or we want a playground there.
This was a, we need a vision to be able to say, we want this thing to apply for a grant. And if we don't have it, we can't apply for it. Does that make sense? Okay. So any other discussion on this? It is, it is kind of lengthy. I skimmed it, skimmed it really fast.
It's like forty-five pages.
Yeah. So, okay, then moving on to, so nothing else on that for discussion? Communications, community event calendar. Any thoughts? By the way, I really appreciate that we have this now.
Yes.
Always.
I can just do a job keeping that up.
So thank you, Ms. Newland, that was Johnson, sorry, wrong name. Ms. Johnson, that was wonderful that we have implemented that. It's, I think, very helpful for our community. Any comments on it? Hey, yearly calendar, twenty twenty-one, so this will be our meetings. Any questions on those?
This is this year's meetings.
Yes.
Mostly do that for the Zoom credentials.
Right.
You'll be seeing the proposed twenty twenty-two calendar at your probably next meeting. So I guess start looking at your personal calendars, primarily spring breaks and that kind of thing, see what might not work for you now here. And we'll bring that to your next meeting.
Any other questions on that?
Also, while we're mentioning that, so the council has previously discussed the Zoom or all the city's boards, I think we pay thirty or thirty-five bucks a month for it. The Planning Commission especially has been able to use it with a number of their the people, the developers, so they've appreciated it. You see, right now, we only got two people and they're both staff people. Not sure it's really necessary for this board, but for thirty-five bucks a month, I think we found value in it, and we'll probably add that as a discussion item or an action item for your next meeting as well. Whether we want to keep doing that next year.
Any, any questions or comments on that? All right, moving on, newly elected officials training.
As Ms. Powell indicated, it's great training for new and old council people. Gives you good training on the Open Meeting Act and other laws that were required to follow. It also tells you what your job and role as a councilperson entails. And I would encourage everybody to consider taking it. And if you want to, either contact myself or Adam Clark.
They, they are really quite, they're also quite wonderful to connect you with other community members and through MML. Having been to several, they're.
If Ms. Race met the Walker mayor, is that correct?
No, East Grand Rapids.
East Grand Rapids. So, yeah, great opportunity to shake hands and meet people.
A great refreshing, refresher course too, because they kind of update you on the new laws that are coming in and how to deal with them. And I just really enjoy the people. They're great teachers.
And overall, MML is a really good resource. I mean.
Generally speaking, yes.
Their, their website is generally quite good. They have a lot of resources that are very useful.
There are some times where I, I wonder. There is a, I believe, online virtual option, if you are not able to go to one of the in-person options.
Yeah, I'm actually looking really forward to that, so. Makes it a little easier for me.
Yeah, it's way to do it.
Yeah. Any other conversations about newly elected officials training? Or not so newly elected officials?
Anybody, any of us.
Right. Department reports, Mr. Manager?
Well, I guess I would congratulate both Madam Mayor and Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Mayor Pro Tem is a lot of words. Don't expect me to actually say that very often. So if Ms. Nixon is okay, that's what I'll call you. Yeah, I mean, this board continues to work civilly with each other, and I appreciate that. The city's gone through a lot over the last several years. Obviously, we all miss Jerry. I'm sure he's sitting in his easy chair with his fire pit, I'm sorry, his fireplace, warming the room with his dog on his lap right now. So we do unfortunately have some difficulties and problems that we'll have to address over the next year. And I hope I can guide you through them, and hopefully you guys can help do that.
Department of Public Works, Mr. LaRose.
I have nothing. Does anybody have any?
Fall asleep because we're so exciting.
No, I couldn't unmute the computer for some reason. I thought Mike was overriding me, but.
Mr. LaRose, could you just comment on one thing, and that is, since the new storm drain has gone in, I've seen a significant reduction in the amount of water being treated at the plant. Can you talk about that for a second?
Yeah, we had a great amount of water infiltration into the sanitary from the old storm drain. When they put the storm drain in, we noticed that things were dropping as they started de-watering. And that storm drain's constantly flowing. It has an open bottom in the pipe that allows groundwater to seep into the pipe. So we, we have seen a big benefit from that, and that also adds to our capacity for future development, because the less we're treating, the more capacity we have, so.
Which is something that would be important when we do a business park development.
Right.
But also, the wastewater treatment plant, I don't know. Bill, I'm not sure if you know the numbers, maybe this is a Darla question, but something like seven or ten thousand dollars in electricity that we spend at the wastewater treatment plant per month? I suspect that number's going down as well.
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but if pumps aren't running, because there's not as much water to be treated, of course, you would see some reduction. It might not be huge, but you're going to see something.
Yeah, is it similar to the reduction that we had when we did the water casing on the drains? Is it not, is it in that? That genre of size or like half or?
No, it's much more than that. When we, we did the sewer project and lined the sewers, we saw some. But this got to a point where Gary was having a hard time treating because the sewer coming in was too rich, so to speak. Wasn't diluted before it got to the plant. I believe he made some adjustments and handled that, and then things are good, so.
So he added more bugs. Thanks, Gary. We had a, we had a good talk about that when we named the water treatment plant. I got a wonderful tour and got to learn about all the bugs that eat the critters that we put through our pipes, so.
So for what it's worth, I'm looking at the report now. It says here that cumulative, same period last year, we're down fifty-five million gallons.
Wow. Okay, this is not an advantage I had expected when we, when Rose and I sat on that enormous, we were just like, please don't have our streets blow up. So, yeah, that's, that's phenomenal.
Yes, wonderful.
All right, thank you, Mr. LaRose. Anything else you got for us?
No, I'm good if you guys are.
I'm good. You all are doing an awesome job.
Thank you, I'll let them know.
Police department, do we have anything from Sergeant Probst? I'm sorry, he's not feeling well.
I believe his exact quote was he's been out for a little while. We're looking forward to him coming back. I believe his period, which he can come back, is on Monday.
Anything from the fire department?
I'm not sure I'm supposed to talk into this thing, but in great, Mrs. Hamel and Mrs. Atchison, welcome aboard. I don't really have anything, other than we've been busy, really, really busy with the sickness and people falling down and vehicle accidents. It's, if it continues this way, we're going to set record numbers for twenty twenty-one. Hopefully, it lightens up a little bit, but we will strive to do our best. And again, I think council, Mr. Womack and the public are still loving our building. My wife appreciates it very much because I spend a lot, a lot of time over there. Because there's some me time. If the council doesn't have anything, I'll sit and be quiet for the rest of the.
Do we need to get the zip line from your house to the?
Well, that was.
Gary.
That was just, is going to be discussed Monday as staff about a breezeway.
Okay. I think, I, I think a zip line.
I think we should have a fundraiser, and that should be the reward if we hit X amount of dollars.
Oh, that's an excellent idea.
See Marty on the zip line.
Nobody wants to see that.
Nobody wants. Okay.
And I wanted to say thank you to your, to you and your staff for a wonderful display at Halloween of having candy and being out there and available and letting all the kids come in and touch the trucks and.
When we run out of candy about forty-five minutes early, so.
It was, it was a big hit. I, when I was there, I saw how fabulous, you know, kids were just lit up to be able to walk in and see the trucks and you, you all did a really nice job of making us look good. So thank you for that.
Mr. LaRose says, I'll pass it on to the group.
Please do, please do. It was wonderful. City clerk?
Just status quo, so.
Just status quo, putting on an election, that's all. And thank you, you did a wonderful job. It was fabulous. And I'm so, in this time when people are talking about elections somehow not being secure or not, I really appreciated how we had pictures of you and the manager with the test being done on the voting machine and we had, I just, thank you for what you do to make that transparent and to make the process effective and make it so people can vote. It was wonderful. Anything for the city clerk? All right, moving on to the Finance Director, Ms. Falcon.
Hello.
Got anything for us tonight?
I do not. Getting ready to mail out the winter tax bills.
Yay.
Yay. How exciting. Any, anything else besides winter tax bills?
Nope.
Different point.
All right, I, no complaints. You do a wonderful job, and thank you for continuing to make a budget that's easy to read.
Thank you.
Code enforcement, anything?
We, it's an ongoing effort.
I think, I think the city's looking wonderful.
I hear that a lot, actually.
Building inspection? I think we talked about actually taking this off because we don't ever have a thing.
I think we might want to talk about amending your bylaws. We just got done doing that with the planning commission.
Yeah. Because that's not like a thing we do anymore. Right? I mean.
I mean, we do.
Well, right, but we don't.
We just don't see the reports.
Right, we don't get the reports in the same way that we used to when we did it in-house. Right? I mean.
Correct.
Board and Commission minutes? Anybody have any questions in any of those? They're in your packet? All right, council comments. I will start with our newly elected people, Ms. Atchison.
Well, I want to thank the public for coming out and voting. I wish more people would show up and that's one of the ways to share your, your voice. The other ways are to come to a meeting or come in on Zoom. We wanted, we want to hear what you want, so. Also, I'm so glad to get re-elected and be able to sit with you wonderful people again, because I enjoy all of you. Welcome, Ashley. I can see that you're going to have a lot of information for us, because you already gave us. And that's what's great, because each one of us have a different thing to bring to the board. And I agree with you, Renee, that we do need to look forward, not backwards. And I think that we're all going to be able to do that. We did have a lot of wonderful things with Jerry, but Jerry's not here anymore. We need to move on a little bit. We can spend time and be sad he's not with us, but we still need to move on.
Absolutely.
And I think that, I believe the meeting went really smoothly tonight. I'm glad about that. Jerry, I'm glad to, to see and mail with us. Do you feel lonely?
I'm always at the end of the row, so it don't matter.
Well, I also do appreciate your views and everybody's views. Don't be afraid to vote the way that you feel because I, I, I commend that. If you vote, if you're the only no or the only yes, be the only no and be the only yes, because we need we need a council that's not always yes. We need to have all the different ideas and, and dimensions for everything, because that's where the community's from, so. And congratulations, ladies, on your mayor and pro, and pro Tem. I think that we're going to be doing, doing good. Thank you, Rose. Everybody just has their own little specialness here, so I'm just excited.
Wonderful. Ms. Hamel?
I just want to thank Cedar Springs for voting for me. I'm honored. Thank you, guys, for all being so welcoming and helpful. I appreciate that already. And at the risk of sounding like a total newbie, did we miss some items from the consent agenda? Because I don't remember going over them.
That's, that's the part where it's a consent agenda.
So you don't have to go through every single one individually?
No, actually, that's why it's a consent agenda. You, we put it all together to vote on as a consent agenda.
Okay.
Which means we don't have to discuss them.
Perfect.
The things that we pulled off are things, and you have.
That we did want to discuss.
And as a council member, you have the prerogative. You don't need a second. Anything that is on the consent agenda that you would like moved to a discussion or action item will be moved if you ask it to be at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, that part is a little bit different from planning commission, so I wasn't totally sure. So thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Thank you for, no, no, thank you for asking.
I seen Molly was going to interject something there.
I was going to say what she said.
Okay.
In.
You received the information in advance.
Okay.
And it's things we've discussed in the past.
Okay.
You missed those things because you weren't here for us.
And excuse us for not explaining.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I've got a lot of it from like doing the planning commission for last year, but.
A lot of it's housekeeping too.
Right, okay, thanks.
All right, let's see, let's go to Ms. Powell.
Okay, well, did all for what you said. I enjoy everybody on this board. It's, it's just a treat to work with you guys every month and beyond. One thing I want to say is the Versity Blood Drive is Tuesday, November sixteenth, twelve to seven. If you could, if you would, if you want to donate blood, Versity has a wonderful website you can go to and sign up for Cedar Springs, which I prefer you did. But if it wasn't your day or your time, you can go to other cities. It's all right there. It's a wonderful website, and you can do wonderful things with us. Just great. The election went well. I had the honor of working with three other wonderful ladies, and I certainly enjoyed their character and the wonderful guidance we got from Rebecca. The other thing is, I went to the cemetery today, and there's a beautiful cemetery sign there, which I haven't seen before, and I was glad to see that, and thank you for that. And that was about it.
Mr. Gross?
I would also like to welcome back, Ms. Atchison and Ms. Hamel. Congratulations on your election. A lot of things happen. Sometimes we disagree, sometimes we don't disagree. We usually work together, so, okay. Want to make a couple of comments about something the fire department has, has kind of picked up on again. Those, those of you that knew fire department often for groups for the school that were achieving and representing themselves well and the community were able to escort football teams, bands, basketball teams, and that sort of thing in and out of town. They did this past week for the football team going to Muskegon. There was as many parents on the sideline crying. That's probably the enjoyment of the families or the kids who were inside the bus. It was pointed out to me that every one of the seniors who were on the varsity football field or football team it never had to happen to them. And it used to be almost a yearly thing for something. So, and even if it was a mediocre but a big win, we bring them in, but. So, and even if it was a mediocre but a big win, we bring them in. But, uh, thank you to the department for doing that. I understand they're going to escort them out of town again this week. And they're doing very well. Uh, whatever it's worth, it is a group, a good group of young people, as was the band and representing our community. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Margaret.
That's awesome.
Making us look good.
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Race.
All right, congratulations to the four of you. Um, I know we'll just do great things together. I just, um, I'm glad to be part of those and although things didn't work out the way I wanted, um, I, you, you don't know unless you try. So I hope that, you know, in the future, you give that option to newer people that want to, move up in, in the city. It's important, so, but thank you. Oh.
I guess it's me. Um, oh, Ms. Nixon.
I was, I was happy to be brief. Um, there's, there's Christmas music on the radio. Depending on your time in retail, that pretty much depends on how you feel about that. But I, I appreciate, uh, my, my fellow council members who continue to show up, even those who disagree with me regularly, especially those who disagree with me regularly. It makes me sharpen my argument and it introduces me to new perspectives, so thank you for that. That's all I have.
Um, thank you for the confidence in this board has bestowed on me to make this work. Uh, my leadership style, as I talked to plenty of you, is more collaborative and less shut up and vote. Not that I, I, I think very highly of Mayor Hall, but I'm going to work very hard at asking each of you what you think and what your positions are as we go along on these things to give input, because I think that's important. I also am going to be asking, um, most of the goals that Jerry and I were focused on when we started on this adventure eight years ago, um, have been met. And I am big on vision, as those of you who know from school board, from uh, library board, we have a library now. Uh, I want us to think about where we're headed. And I've talked to some of you already, but I'm going to be asking each of you to tell me, what are the things that you think are important? The relationships to the other entities like, I mean, the building development team and like the DDA that Rose sits on and like the chamber and so on. And, uh, talk about how we can develop additional relationships and work on partnerships and what some of these visioning important things are that we have as we move forward. We recently had a really wonderful, uh, workshop meeting where we talked about some of that. And I would like to see some of that moved into action. And I know that everybody has different things that are important to them. So I would like you to tell me what those are so that I can help facilitate those relationships and direct you in that capacity to, I think we're better if we're seven people making those connections than just one. So that's my, my basic focus on that. And with that, we're adjourned. Eight thirty-one.